Everybody, welcome to the third hearing of the committee's inquiry into the planning system and the impacts of climate change on the environment and communities. I acknowledge the Darkinjung people, the traditional custodians of the lands on which we are meeting today, which is on Darkinjung country. I pay my respects to the elders, past and present, and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples and their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name's Sue Higginson, I'm the Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today, however it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Welcome and thank you for making the time to give evidence today. Could each of you please start from my left? Please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation.
Thank you, my name's Deanne Frankel, I'm the Section Manager of Strategic Planning Projects at Central Coast Council. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
My name is Dr Chris McLean, I'm a Principal Strategic Planner and Acting Senior Ecologist at Central Coast Council. I have taken affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely, and truthfully declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would one of you or both of you like to start by making an opening statement?
So, yeah, my name is Chris McLean, my expertise is in ecology, so I've got extensive experience acting as an expert witness primarily for councils in land environment court class one matters, so I've got a lot of expertise in understanding urban ecology, urban biodiversity, and I've also worked in strategic planning and DA assessment as well, and I'm the author of a wide range of councils' environmental documents, including Sustainability and Climate Change Action Plan and the Greener Places Strategy.
Thank you.
And I, as I said, the Section Manager of Strategic Planning Projects, so I have the ecologists, urban designers, and heritage architects reporting to me, so we're responsible for preparing strategic planning documents to inform land use planning, of which Chris has authored a number. As an experience, I've got over 20 years' experience in strategic and statutory planning for local government, state government, as well as mining, aviation, and private consultancy and embeddings with environmental principles and climate change principles into those outcomes.
Thank you. And so, the committee will just ask some questions if that's okay, and we'll just take a fairly free-flowing form to do that. But I just note, I might just start with a couple of questions if that's okay. In the council's, in the submission, there seems to be a sort of clear theme about the concern around the protection or non-protection of biodiversity, the capacity of council to take that strategic approach, and how the planning instruments apply in order to adapt, be prepared for climate change, but also acknowledging the challenges that we face in terms of biodiversity loss and biodiversity protection. What do you see, in your experience with council, as the most sort of common theme that through the application of council decisions and the instruments, that is not protecting biodiversity and is not preparing us for climate change?
It's probably one, a direction from government, higher levels of government, that there needs to be a wide number of people accommodated on the Central Coast. You've got the Central Coast Regional Plan that says there has to be tens of thousands of people moving to the Central Coast, when for greenfield development at least, the land still occurs, you might not call easy to develop, it's either flood prone, so it's on a flood plain, it might look simple to build on because it's flat, but it's next to a river, it's got nice grass, doesn't have biodiversity constraints, or if it's not flood prone, not exclusively, then it has high biodiversity values. And I think that's a real challenge for this region, how do you fit people here that aren't in infill development? And then infill development presents other challenges as well, in particular if it's on single sites, that larger developments usually result in a better product from urban renewal, but if a single landowner only owns 800 square metres of land, getting a lot of open space incorporated into that is quite challenging.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the key challenges for us as a council, this particular Central Coast Council, is trying to maintain the financial viability of the organisation versus the challenges of delivering and implementing best outcomes across the Central Coast. So that is something that a strategic planner does, when we're writing out documents, we have to very carefully balance, we have to understand the implication on resources, even though we know what best practice delivery is, the implications on resources, whether it's additional offices required for compliance, or assessment, or maintenance, is something that we have to internally balance, so that is one of our key challenges.
And so just on that, it's a, you know, a very interesting point. So are you, how does that manifest then through decision-making? Is it a compromise? Is it a, you know, what does that actually look like?
Yeah, so internally, as for any sort of document, you undertake external exhibition of the document, but before it even gets to external exhibition, there's internal consultation undertaken. So it is a balancing act between staff at staff level, and then if particular members obviously have any concerns, then it can get escalated to director level, et cetera, and they often will resolve where that balance needs to land. We acknowledge to get the best practice outcomes we need, it will have an additional burden on staff, which requires additional resources, and as I mentioned, that's where we're challenged. So the way we draft our provisions is mindful of the implications on resourcing.
And is there a place where that, is there transparency around that internal process? Like, does that manifest through your written reports or your recommendations, or is it something that's a bit more behind the doors?
Yeah, so we definitely, in our council reports, will include all the consultation we've done internally, it doesn't always explicitly raise all the concerns that were raised, but yeah, often we'll talk about that balance that needs to occur, but not always.
You know I will talk all the questions.
Sure, you can continue. Of course, one of the focuses today is going to be when it comes to the seawall at Wambroong in particular, so I can turn you there just to see whether, has council received any lots along that Wambroong area from council, from the state government? Has anything been transferred to council?
I'd have to take that on notice.
Yeah, that's delivered by different unit, we can definitely take that on notice.
Okay, so you're not dealing with anything to do with that?
Not specifically the seawall, no.
And in terms of your understanding, are landowners paying for any of the construction and maintenance of their sections of proposed coastal seawall?
Similarly, have to take that one on notice when we can get confirmation.
Fair enough, well, I think those are all going to be taken on notice then. Then further, will works be built on in terms of the beach, or will they be built landward if that is to be approved?
We'll take that on notice.
Take that on notice, okay.
There is a DA to be submitted soon to.
Yep, has a DA been submitted or not as of yet?
Not that I'm aware of, I know that there has to be transparency around the assessment of that, and I have been nominated as the personal assessor ecology impacts of that, so I've been keeping myself at arm's length from the other decisions.
And I was actually going to flow on to my next question as well, in terms of, with council being an applicant in the process, or a joint applicant in the process, how do you manage that conflict of interest in the assessment process?
So I can talk to some of that, so in that, the council has gotten a law firm to draft some documents to say when there's a perceived or an actual conflict of interest there, the difficulty becomes, for example, if you're someone like me that happens to live in the same LGA, you'll probably then know people that have opinions on that, so it's about making sure that you don't listen to those opinions, just to make your assessment as you would any other DA that you're looking at, and in that to declare those conflicts of interest up front.
So in terms of managing those conflicts of interest, largely it's a process that's been advised upon by this independent law firm that you've engaged.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And with respect to the biodiversity and the challenge, as you outlined, in terms of the Central Coast, you look at it on a map and you see it looks like lots of areas where you could have developable land, but they're constrained in terms of either biodiversity or flood or even bushfire risks in some of those areas. What sort of certification, and this is, I guess, coming from some commentary I've heard from applicants probably in the process, that there's several different certification processes? What is council looking at in terms of ensuring that there's sort of one source of truth, so to speak, and that, you know, when an area is certified, that people can still proceed with some confidence in that area after that certification in terms of the biodiversity requirements and the like?
So for biodiversity in particular, there's a process under the Biodiversity Conservation Act called Biodiversity Certification. The similar process also occurs under the federal legislation, so the Environmental Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act, and in those, council's position, and it's in the document, for proponents, when there's land rezoning proposed, it's council's preference for them to obtain biodiversity certification. That process occurs through the New South Wales Government, so essentially, whatever the Biodiversity Conservation Division is now called, there's been a name re-change recently, and that runs, they run that process, and there have been, there's half a dozen properties that are undergoing that process at the moment. The frustration, I guess, from what we've heard from applicants, is the process is reasonably slow, but it provides them with certainty, and probably the level of rigor that's required by that department is equal or greater than what council expects, and there's the need for seasonal surveys, and there's a high expense. The benefit of that process is that once land is biodiversity certified, until that order expires, which is usually for 30-plus years, then there's certainly there that you get a lot yield that relates to whatever's proposed, as opposed to if you've got some land that's owned residential, say R2, and it contains an endangered ecological community, for example, the Biodiversity Conservation Act pretty much says, well, you've got to ignore the zoning in a sense, and go through steps to avoid, minimise, and finally offset. Also, court judgments have shown that you can't assume that land that's zoned for biodiversity protection, so a conservation zone, it shouldn't be used as avoidance land, largely if it's an example of a residential subdivision, if you can't build that on there anyway, well, it's not really avoidance. So going through a biodiversity certification process, that provides a high level of certainty, and I guess for your committee, it might be good to have a think about whether or not you can recommend there for biodiversity certification to be a common practice for when gateway determinations being issued, to say, well, is there a biodiversity constraint here, and would there be benefit there in that occurring?
So in terms of your view, that is the optimal period in terms of the gateway determination step?
I think so, I think at that stage at least, it'll be understood whether or not there are biodiversity constraints on a site and how severe they are, and then the main sort of thing would be a direction to then say, well, is the constraint serious or not? And probably some thought around what that might look like in terms of something needing biodiversity certifications, it might be a threshold, it might be, well, if you need a BDA later on, so essentially having a significant impact, so a biodiversity development assessment report, well, you need to write a certification report instead.
And to build on that, there was a review just recently last year done on the Biodiversity Act as well, and some of the feedback that was given, and the reported feedback was, again, that recommendation that the BCAR is done at that stage, and it answers your question, that gives the certainty before they go down the development assessment.
Thank you.
So just on that, were you referring to the review of the Biodiversity Conservation Act here? And so, what do you say, so given you've read that review, do you think that, so council suggestion that you do that biodiversity assessment very early up front, and you do it as comprehensive as possible, how, what do you say about, where does the sort of climate and climate adaptation, climate mitigation, where, do you see that there's an intersection that perhaps we're missing if we focus that early up front with, on biodiversity, or do you see that that's separate work, or work that should be done at the same time?
I think the legislation, the Biodiversity Conservation Act, or the biodiversity assessment method in a way misses a key understanding of connectivity, so there's a requirement at the front of writing either a BDA or a BCAR to look at these things, but in a way, from looking at these, I think there's a minimal amount of legislative weight put on that, because the intent is more around avoiding the impacts that are occurring now, and minimising the impacts that are occurring now, rather than impacts that might occur in 30 to 50 years' time. So considering things like species migration needing wildlife corridors, and in that functional wildlife corridors in particular in a north-south fashion, regional corridors in particular from the north to the south where species can migrate as you have a warming climate, I think council, we've been trying to look at that ourselves, and trying to understand how you'd factor that in as well, but it's quite complex work, and it's probably best led by another agency at a higher level, but our LGA stops 50 kilometres north of here, which the climate impacts don't stop at the LGA boundary, it's probably better to make sure that the adjoining LGAs match those corridor connections at those points as well.
And in the submission it notes the fire-prone and the high degree of fire-prone land in the LGA. Do you think that the current biodiversity assessments and the fire assessments are making the links and connections to better plan for a changing climate and the more, you know, frequency of fire and the intensity of fire? Are we looking at that? Are we getting that planning right, or?
The challenge for me in sitting in a number of court matters, where there's been an intersection between planning for bushfire protection and the Biodiversity Conservation Act, and the issue becomes that the size of asset protection zones that are needed, and what council said in its submission is around environmental living style lots that might be, say, two hectares in size covered by vegetation, once you put an asset protection zone on those sites, you end up with almost half of a small lot being cleared if it's a development on the top of a ridge, say, because you need a larger APZ for downslope. So you might end up with half hectare to a hectare of vegetation needing only 15% canopy at the end. And so that creates challenges and conflict between how do you conserve biodiversity, not saying that you shouldn't have asset protection zones, I think you need those, otherwise you'll end up with catastrophic property loss. But is it more a question of saying, well, maybe you shouldn't be living in those areas if you can't, because there's no certainty there under a changing climate, if you go under the worst climate scenario of, let's say, P8.5. If we've already seen a summer where you end up with every patch of vegetation really from Queensland or Victoria having fire within it, you then have a worse, more severe climate, those asset protection zones might not even be adequate in the future, so that's probably something to think about as well, is where should people be living? Icotte, Ember Attac, that can go kilometres and kilometres, yeah, it's a challenge.
And so on that, do you, do you think you have, would you say that council currently has the capacity, the tools, and I suppose the courage to say where development shouldn't go, even if a planning instrument says, well, actually it perhaps is zoned for a dwelling, but that asset protection zone would have a significant, or a big impact on biodiversity? Where does your, where do you see this council as being able to navigate that? Is it more consent happens or refusal happens?
I think, well, at the moment, I'm involved in 11 separate court matters where ecology's raised in just this LGA, so there are a mixture, everything from greenfield subdivisions, 450 square metre lots, through to environmental living style properties. So certainly, this council's pushed back on those sort of things. The issue is, it's a question of merit, because the standard LEP instrument allows residential properties to be built on environmental living, like a C4 or a C3 zone, and there's also some provision, even no dwellings are privated under C2, there's savings provisions there, that if there was a dwelling entitlement under a previous zone, but they carry over. And so it becomes an argument around saying, well, that level of clearing is inconsistent with the zone objectives, and even the lowest level of protection, which is the C4 zone, the environmental living, has got in the LEP, the objectives are around where you can't have an impact on special ecological values, so essentially if you're having an impact on, that is, having an impact on, say, an endangered ecological community or a threatened species, well, that's a special ecological value, and that'd be inconsistent, whereas the C3 zone goes one zip further, it's sort of says, well, you can't trash the environment. And so that's probably the real challenge here, is what do you, how do you say to someone, well, you've owned that block that you've had for 30 years, you're wanting to retire on it hypothetically, actually, we don't think you can build a house on there, that's probably quite a hard conversation to have.
Just one question that I think flows on from that, and that's consideration of transferable development rights, from obviously one location that you've identified to another location. I was wondering if you'd just comment on that, what issues might be appropriate there, whether it's something that you'd consider, and what would need to be taken into account if you do?
So by development rights, like a previous consent?
A previous, well, if you've got a consent.
Yes.
And because of climate change or something else, it's decided that that's no longer appropriate, you can't build your house of your dreams there on the block, and you can then transfer that to another site that they approve.
Well, so, because that also applies for the land, let's say you've got a consent that was granted in 1980, for example, and we weren't thinking of these things, in theory, your house burns down, you can then rebuild it in the same standard, even though it might flood again. The main sort of issue there is saying, well, if that house looks like this particular form, and then you move it up the block, you need to probably have an assessment of the new environmental impact, because what happens if you move it 50 metres away, and there's something else that hasn't been considered when in 1980, when your previous consent was issued. But yeah, I think it's important probably to try and think about how some of these communities can still have development in them. An example would be if you have a low-lying community, you'll hear from speakers later from the peninsula, for example, that's low-lying, you then have, and there's a number of these places on the coast where you have lots of flood-prone land, you put on there a metre of sea level rise, largely that area will become uninhabitable by a certain amount of time without intervention. What do you do with that? Do you then say, oh, you can't actually have a DA for a new house at all? And then what, does it become shanty towns where everything's falling down because you can't, the council doesn't allow any new consents to be issued? In my opinion, that's probably not the right way.
In terms of, and can I ask you both, in terms of current legislative regimes that are available, does that allow for transferable development rights? Or is that something that state government with councils would need to look at in terms of amending planning legislation?
It's not something I've dealt with or had to even investigate, so yeah, not through my experience, it's not to say it's not there, I've definitely not been exposed to it, or heard of it occurring in the New South Wales systems that I've worked in.
Thank you.
Can I just, can I just follow up on some of these lines? Because, I mean, clearly, we're in a situation now where there's probably hasn't been a government in the history of the state which is more determined to solve the housing crisis. The question is, how do you do it? Obviously, freeing up the planning system to the extent that allows greater density in the right places is key. Has the council grappled with this in the context of climate change and the environment? Like, clearly, the elephant in the room's going to be the tension, right, in this, let's cut through all the red tape, it's ridiculous that people can't get things built, we've got kids who can't get into homes, the housing affordability runs through the roof, how are we going to increase supply and protect the environment? Like, has the council kind of sat down and thought about, given the chronic environmental change exposure that an LGA like Gosford's got?
Yeah, I think, look, one of the key themes is, looking at the Central Coast, there's actually quite a few areas that already allow quite decent sort of densities, so, you know, the entrance is an example, Gosford's another example, even Wam, there's some decent density, a lot of it's not being taken up. So it's, there is land zoned there, so it's understanding why that isn't being taken up by.
And why is that?
You know, there's been examples in the entrance where there's been previous DA approvals, and they've just never been enacted. Is it construction costs, escalating construction costs, is it, as I said, some of them have to DA approvals, and they're not just occurring. In Wam, there's some examples, particularly on the eastern side of the rail land, there's some reasonable densities there, and it's not the level of take-up that you'd expect, particularly, you know, with the station, and looking at the Toddset reforms that have been on exhibition, you know, there's an appetite from government there, so what are the barriers preventing that happening? Maybe, maybe some of that take-up is, is it a desirable location? Do people want to live there? Are these government investing enough in those public domain outcomes, the open space, all those other things? And again, that comes to, you know, if we invest in that infrastructure and creating that amenity in the public domain, will that entice the investment? But then drawing back to my previous earlier comment about costs, and being a financially sustainable council, this is again where our challenges are, and balancing where we can invest our money, you know, where our priorities are, because we do have to carefully manage our budgets. So is there a whole government approach to get our investment, additional opportunities?
Is financing got anything to do with this? The ability for developers to raise finance, to invest in that high density?
I think that's a problem, you have a look around Gosford, for example, and as you leave here on Main Street, you'll see there's a property, I think it's got a for-sale sign on it, again, a number of these developments, they kind of have a, they've got physical commencement to build something large, but the construction costs of that'll be incredibly high, double-digit millions. And so, I guess it's probably questionable for the finance industry to say, well, what's the barrier there of granting finance for something that, I'm sure, once that product is built, you can sell the 200 apartments that'll be on that site, but then why is it such a constraint?
So the takeout from this discussion is not necessarily that it's a binary problem in terms of, you've got all this exposure to environment and climate change, we've got to protect the environment, the answer is density in other places, and my colleague's point about the transferable development rights might be part of the solution, but it sounds like it's a much bigger problem than that, because you can provide the platform for that density, but developers have actually got to take it up. So does that imply maybe some more thoroughgoing government economic intervention?
Yeah, look, I definitely think, my view is, one of the biggest hurdles right now is the construction cost, that has to be tackled, I think that's the biggest barrier at the moment. We've got St Hilliers Development, is that it? You may be aware that that's just recently gone to administration.
Which one was that, though?
It's a major, St Hilliers Development, just there, major sort of residential development, mixed-use development, it's on hold at the moment because it's gone into administration. So I think the biggest immediate challenge right now is construction cost, how do we combat those construction costs? Also, just to touch on the density, I think one of the other challenges on the Central Coast is appetite for density. The majority of people on the Central Coast live in single detached dwellings, and that's the highest of demand, so it's that, you know, government being brave to say, we need to change the way we're doing things, and create those really high amenity places so people actually want to live in those locations, so that is a big challenge.
Is that, is that a function, a cultural function of people moving here to have that nice aesthetic rub and density in Sydney, for example?
Yeah, I think you come to the Central Coast for different reasons compared to living in the centre of Sydney.
What are the sort of, what are some of the sort of things that you think, when you say that, that we need to be looking? you, when you say the ash, that we need to be looking at? I think I'm hearing, we need the state to be looking at what kind of community infrastructure is invested in and provided. What sort of things do you think this area would benefit from and what that would look like?
So I look at Gosford as an example, and you may or may not be aware, there's something called the Gosford Urban Design Framework. That is a whole of government roadmap to delivering revitalisation of Gosford. It's got some great strategies in there, things that have to be delivered. But it requires a whole of government approach. My view is, at the moment, we're looking at individual sites and we're not looking at that public domain and connecting all those sites together. So we've got a uni development that's being talked about, we've got the upgraded health precinct, it's just been adopted, the Kibble Park improvements, the waterfront master plan. But how do we get those public domain improvements? You know, we need traffic modelling, who's going to find that? We need all levels of, you know, state and local government to come together to do the transport modelling, to see if we can change some of the road networks, to get, you know, can we widen footpaths to get nicer trees in there, more outdoor trading, all those sort of things that make people want to come and spend time in the, in the centre rather than weekends, go and to the beach or something like that. You know, what is it that's going to want people, create an environment people want to live in and want to stay to play as well? So that's a challenge. So I'm chairing a Gosford City Centre Working Group, which is just internal staff. So people are doing the components now. But what is that whole of government approach? How are we bringing whole of government to make sure we can do a master plan on the, on the train station? So we've got a train station there that's, to be honest, quite horrible and not a very nice safe environment. When you get off, there's a park that council owns. U D F talks about doing a collaborative master plan on that. But there's no traction in that. We've got major issues with Dain Drive.
Sorry, who did you say?
U D, U D F. Transport for New South Wales or the Urban Design Framework.
Oh, yeah, okay.
U D F. We've got, again.
So have you been to, have you been, has the council been in to see Minister Scully about these issues? Like in terms of, we want to provide the uplift to solve, help solve the housing crisis, but this is where we think it should happen. Like, have those discussions been had?
Not that I'm aware of. Again, not to say it hasn't happened, but not that I'm aware of or been partied to. So.
Okay.
Yeah. But yeah, we've got an internal steering committee with directors and the working group is making some recommendations at the upcoming meeting in this space as well to say what we think needs to be done to try and drive this change.
Because I, I'd imagine the proportion of people commuting from the Central Coast is probably one of the highest in the state, is it, in terms of commuting?
It's very high, either to Newcastle or.
So you would think there would be some sort of appetite for increased density around transport hub, like it should be amenable, notwithstanding those cultural.
Yep. Particularly Woy Woy, Gosford, Togra and Wye. It's four of the critical, and even Rimbaud, I'd say would be probably the five biggest ones on the Central Coast, where there's some improvement opportunities. Again, there's challenges. Togra's got some significant flooding constraints around there, so getting the densities there. Wye has flooding constraints, but there's more opportunities around Wye. The regional plan actually talks about Togra being that, that primacy sort of in between the two centres. But actually, when you look at Wye, when you travel into Wye, it's got existing high schools, it's got primary schools, it's got open space, it's got, you know, a nice sort of cultural sort of heart as well. So there's some opportunity there to get potential density and the amenity there because Togra is really challenged in regards to that flooding around the, around the station, if we're talking about walkability to stations.
Is the, just slightly on the side here, is the, what does the community say to you about the train to Sydney? Is it a good service? Is it a good, is it effective? Or is it something that there's a level of dissatisfaction about it?
The biggest thing I've heard is just about frequency. Yeah, particularly some outside those peak hours. But that's, that's, to be honest, that was when I worked here over twenty years ago. I haven't heard recent, recent discussion.
I think the problem is, by the time the train arrives at Gosford, it's quite full. And, and so it's an hour and twenty minutes from Gosford to Central. And so the stand until, say, Hornsby at least, which is, say, forty five minutes, is probably not all that pleasant. And so whether or not there's enough rolling stock to put more services on, the other gripe I've heard from people is more the service is quite slow for a lot of those areas. And so whether or not there could be work done to get the trains to run faster as a track in the state where you could actually run, instead of going at sixty kilometres an hour, up to eighty kilometres an hour, for example, in places, those sort of things to get that, that connection down towards an hour rather than an hour and twenty.
And what about, what about in terms of growth strategy for the Central Coast? I mean, if you've got a large proportion of people commuting to Sydney and we're in this modern phase of the economy where working from home, a lot of these jobs is actually possible, has there been any work done on government investing or legislating to allow people to work, live and work where they, work where they live? Like, it, I mean, it seems to me to be a terrible waste of resource and time to have a large majority of your population travelling an hour and a half to.
Yeah. It's just not good on wellbeing either. I've done it for many, many years. The other aspect is on the, you know, where you work, and that's one of the focuses of Gosford and the Urban Design Framework, because with the opportunities in uni, you know, we've got the tape here, we've got the health, we've got the law courts, it's an opportunity to get those higher order jobs and employment. You know, so people can capture and be employed locally so they don't have to travel. So if we get, you know, it's a nice place to live and they've got that higher order employment.
I'm just wondering how much of this is employers insisting that people actually front up physically when it's unnecessary? I mean, that would be a fairly low hanging fruit to dig into it.
Yeah, I can't, look, as far as any discussions I've personally had in this space, no, I haven't. I do recall just recently, I heard on the radio that there were some investigations at like a industrial relations level, federal industrial relations level about, it was probably within the last couple of months, about, you know, making sure people still have those work from home opportunities.
Do you have any statistics on the proportions of various occupations and what, and the proportion of travel to, say, Sydney? For example, is it majority white collar workers? Are we talking trades or?
Yeah, we could take that on notice. We definitely have some statistics on the proportion, whether it's broken down to industry level, I'm not sure.
The ability, the necessity of actually physically have to be somewhere would be interesting to look at those stats, yeah.
Can I just, just one follow up?
Yes.
And you, this may or may not be relevant, but, but since we're talking about increasing densities in appropriate locations and the effects of climate change, I recall during Covid, on another inquiry, a council on the Central Coast actually paid for the Commonwealth Bank to make statistics available about the use of credit cards, et cetera, available locally. So while we found in Sydney, a number of businesses were saying that they were really struggling. In fact, regional towns were actually booming because people were working and staying from home and therefore attracting more, you know, more people and allowing more commerce to take place, which seems to me to be one of the things that we're talking about. Because every day, you're talking about a large number of people leaving here. Can you just comment on, on that and how that, those types of situations, following off from what my colleagues say, might be of relevance to some of the other issues we're talking about, about increasing densities and opportunities here?
So just to clarify, you're talking about the opportunity for more employment opportunities.
More employment to attract trade.
Absolutely. I'm a big believer in decentralisation so that we can get the employment. And you look at, you know, even the three cities model in Sydney. So in my previous role in state government, I was the director of the Western Sydney Aerochopper, so creating the planning framework for Western Sydney. And it was all about that decentralisation focus. And I believe the same for regional centres, it should be applied because it's an opportunity. We've got huge demands on infrastructure in Sydney. You know, it's, it's a win win to be able to get people living and working in the place that they're, they're located. It's better on there, you know, you provide the employment opportunities, land's cheaper for the employer than it is in the Sydney arrangement and significantly improved quality of life for those people not having to commute. I personally spent many years travelling to various roles in the city centre because of the employment opportunities that were offered to me that weren't available in those regional centres. So, and then I personally have made a decision that I want that work quality of life balance. So whilst I personally stepped down a number of levels, it's because I want that balance. I've got opportunities, different opportunities, but it's because I want that work life balance.
I mean, I, I, I mean, sorry, Chirr.
No, you go for it.
A little bit indulgent, but there's, just anecdotally, I've heard stories of a friend of ours who's in robotics, who was literally working five days a week from home programming robots, is now being told to go and five days physically. It's insanity, like travelling an hour to and from to do it.
I think this is a challenge from an industrial relations perspective because it's been clearly demonstrated that individuals can be productive and in many instances, they say more productive, and I know for me, more productive, being able to work from home. So how we can then, employers can then enforce people to go in excessively, I do think there's unbalance. But going in, you know, five days a week when we've already proven, staff have proven that it's, it's possible and employees, we're still, employers, we're still operating viable organisations. So I think that's a big, big focus for government to, it's, you know, better outcome for employee, at least definitely.
I've got, I think, three points I'd like to touch on. I know we're getting close to time. The three things are actually trees, planned retreat, consultation and just going back to those challenges in the Land and Environment Court. So I'll just quickly run through them. So we've heard from the community here that heat is an issue, heat islands and heat, the kind of swat growing city type of concept, and the absence of being able to control the loss of mature trees and what we do in terms of replacing trees. I'd love your comments on that.
So I think in terms of trees rather than native vegetation, I think there's not really much planning, in terms of a planning framework that protects them. So you can say in a D C P, well, you should protect trees.
But a D C P is a D C P, yeah.
And so I was involved in a court matter that consists, outside of this L G A, so it was at, in Rose Bay, where there was a golf course proposing to remove five hundred mature trees. In that, the matter was settled largely, even though the trees had been planted in nineteen forty, there wasn't really any planting grounds. And for biodiversity, we were quite limited because the trees were planted vegetation. So we couldn't say, well,
Were they native trees or?
They were native trees. They were broadly pike bark trees.
Right.
And, and so in that, that matter ended up being, being settled. So in that, we, we made sure that the applicant had to, for every time there's a tree that's lost, they have to plant more, they're going to plant more vegetation, those sort of things. But pretty much the legal advice on that was like, well, if you go to, go to take it to a trial, it's probably low chance of success. And, and so I think that's a challenge that you've got site, and this is back to my earlier comment, where you've got individual landowners owning eight hundred square metres, for example, played by one lot, and there happens to be a lot sitting in the middle of the site. Well, how do you build something around it? What happens then if you own six lots and you happen to have a tree, that, that one tree that's significant is no longer sitting in the middle of one lot, you could probably work around it. And so it's, I think it's a question of scale to say, well, if there's small time developers building things on eight hundred square metres, that doesn't actually result in a good amenity outcome as opposed to something on half an hectare or one hectare. Because twenty percent of private open space on eight hundred square metres is going to be a lot smaller and won't necessarily be able to support a mature tree in the future compared to if that lot was five thousand square metres. That percentage then becomes far more land that can then be clustered as some sort of open space. So I think that's a real challenge. Planting trees on verges can be a challenge where there's a lot of services. There's also where you've got a footpath and a curb, there's often very small amount of room. So you might have under half a metre to plant a tree. And then there's a conflict there with the asset manager saying, well, that tree now might not be a problem, but in twenty years' time, it's going to damage the curb or the footpath. And from a risk perspective, the path gets raised and people fall over and trip on it. And.
Does that come up?
Oh, regularly, regularly.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think this is, you know, when we're talking about densities as well, you know, particularly residential, you know, detached or attached residential dwellings, you know, we're allowing smaller lots, which I support. But what's happened is over time, developers have reduced the street width. So I almost believe that from a state government level, we need to be absolutely prescribing a minimum verge width, because there's no way on a small lot they're going to be able to get that mature tree. If minimum verge widths are prescribed, where you can get your footpaths, you can get a decent tree located in there, which will contribute to the urban heat. So there's always pressure from developers and it's always the verge that goes those first. And even the road carriage away is being reduced. So, you know, and I'll almost be, I'd say, a non approval provision, because otherwise, if it's in a D C P or anything like that, everything gets very, you know, we talk about in the Toddset non refusals, and I think for climate change, we move towards non approval provisions. So it can't be overlooked in Land and Environment Court, for example. I think that would help get some improved outcomes that can't be challenged.
The other issue is around ensuring quality of landscaping. And so the Environment Planning and Assessment Act doesn't allow for the holding of bonds on private land at all. And so you can then say, well, applicant go and plant trees. And they go and plant trees. The only time that you have a hold point really is prior to the issue of a construction certificate and say, well, have you done these things? The problem becomes if the tree gets planted early on, there's no hold point there. The next hold point that you've got, and the final one, is prior to an occupation certificate or if it's a subdivision, prior to a subdivision certificate. And so that's quite early. And so you don't necessarily know that that tree will survive. And so you can have a condition of consent that says, well, you need to look after the tree for five years. But at least with this council and others I've worked with, the amount of compliance staff that are available is quite small. And it then becomes subjective. You go out there and the tree's still sitting there, it's kind of alive. And then it becomes, well, the tree's still there. It just happens that it was planted in the road basin and hasn't been able to grow and all these other issues that relate to it. And so it becomes much more difficult. Whereas if there was the ability to take bonds on private land for something that was stratted, that might become something, something to think about as well to get better quality landscaping on medium density and high density development.
Is that part of a certifier issue though?
It is, in a way. The certifier will often say, oh, the tree's there. We all know about private certified.
But it's not really a tree.
Yeah, and what's gone on there, so.
And then, thank you. And then, we haven't really talked about it, but the, I think it was in your submission, you talk about, might have been another one, but about community leading with solutions about those local areas. I'm just, I'm curious to know, from your very deep and wealth of experience, both of you together, where could we be doing better? Like, we have this kind of thing, public, public participation is, here's the plan, tell us what you think, and off we go. And we do, you know, obviously, there's various efforts of how much we integrate community input. Do you see where we could be doing this much better?
Yeah, absolutely. From the, from, from the delivery we're doing now, the financial sustainability of our council unfortunately is dictating a lot of the outcomes that have been achieved. It's, it's the funding, the budget constraints that are impeding our ability to do better in regards to the provision particularly of trees, for us to even provide trees in different areas, let alone our policies around what developers are supposed to provide. So we, we are desperately short in those people, the compliance officers, the assessment officers and the maintenance staff. Because even if we're prescribing that these outcomes, whether sometimes it's not even trees, sometimes trees aren't suitable, sometimes it could be understory vegetation, the resistance we get internally is because we don't have the maintenance staff to be able to go out there because some people won't like it or it might impede the pedestrian footpath. They just don't have the. footpath, um, they just don't have the resources to be going out there. So it's trying to get that balance with the resources that we've got. If we had more resources, um, we'd be able to do better. And it's just because of our financial situation, we don't, um, you know, the consultation we've done, everyone sees it as an ideal, but whilst we're in the situation we're in, we can't have those additional requirements.
Um, and just finally, I think we're just about out of time, just wrapping up with, um, when you said there's 11, um, matters in the court.
Oh, there's more, they're, they're the ones that are.
Yeah, they're the ones you're part of. I'm just curious to know, um, I've had conversations with the minister for planning and in, he's kind of had this public and open discussion and he says, you know, if a planning panel or the state government approves a development that a council's not happy with, the council could challenge those in a court. Is that something you've ever seen in your experience? Is that something that you would?
Um, so the issue, issue with that, it's a third party, peer rights are limited to not merit their base on juris.
So it's judicial review only?
Judicial review instead. So it says, well, did, did the, whoever the consent authority was make an error in law as opposed to the merit of the thing might still be bad. One, one thing I'll say about the reason why there are so many matters in court is around this ability to do deemed refusal. As soon as 40 days is up, an applicant can go to the court and say, oh, the council hasn't looked at my DA yet. And so that's between 40 days and six months. Um, and, and I think the issue that I've seen with that is the court is also very willing to accept amendments to applications. And so I've had things that are up to version nine after it was submitted in the court. And so essentially the applicants are using the council's experts as a way of getting their application to be up to scratch rather than, um, doing the homework and the legwork themselves.
Really to get a fair, a fair procedural system, the court should only really be allowed to consider what was submitted and what the application contained. Um, yeah, because staff aren't given enough time because as Chris said, you know, you're getting these amendments through, through the process, through the legal process, they've got insignificant amount of time to actually review it, they do the best that they can, but you know, it's, it's not fair on council staff either to be reviewing it.
This is incredible, like a, a recent example is, there was a hearing set down for a Monday. The, we, we'd written a joint expert report, which is the sort of thing that the experts write beforehand, it was submitted. Um, there were issues with the application that both myself and my counterpart agreed to. On the Friday before the hearing, um, the applicant took, um, went to seek leave for a document, a whole new suite of documents and we were directed to write a joint expert report due, um, basically on the day we were being, going to be cross-examined on that. So the, the barrister for that received that joint expert report two hours before I was due in the witness box. Is that a fair procedural thing?
Too much pressure and too much, yeah.
Exactly. And, and so in that too, I had no capacity for any slippage. We had a due deadline and that basically, we, and that was, the slippage was ours at most.
To, to that point you just raised, could you take on notice? And I don't expect you to have off the top of your head, how many matters you've actually got before the Land and Environment Court on that provision effectively of the 40 days?
The deemed refusal.
Uh, I, I, I could take, I'll give you the actual numbers and we could do it for the whole of the council.
That would be so helpful.
Yeah. And that might be worth conducting in the court too, to see how many are going deemed refusal because I think it's, um, the issue becomes when something's under deemed refusal, it takes, sucks away all the resources from all the other applications because the council gets given a very short amount of time to write the set of contentions, but yes.
So that thing goes to the top of the pile, effectively what you have to deal with. So yeah, which probably leads to more deemed refusals in the process because you're not done in 40 days.
Um, I think we could go on all day, but I, we've run out of time, we've hit our deadline there. Thank you very much for your evidence and your time. Um, there were quite a few questions taken on notice. Um, the secretariat will contact you directly in relation to those questions. Thank you very much. It's been very valuable.
Thank you, very valuable, thank you.
Thank you and welcome back. Thank you for making the time to come and give evidence. So could each of you, starting from my left, please state your name, position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, starting with you, Ms Harvey?
Lesley Harvey, I solemnly and sincerely truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I'm Debbie Sonata. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
And I'm Jen Wilder. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would any of you like to start by making an opening statement?
Yes, Ms Wilder, I'd like to. Yes, thank you. Thanks for listening. August are a community organisation who formed in 2016. We formed to address the alarming lack of canopy in our local area, which is the Wauwai Peninsula, right here on the Central Coast. We know that the Central Coast Council has identified nineteen dangerously hot priority suburbs, which includes our community. The unpleasant experience of living in an urban heat island is what has led us here today. Filled only by small donations and volunteer effort, Gust has proven that if informed, the community do want trees and that providing them is entirely possible. In a climate emergency, it is disappointing that such vital health infrastructure has been left to the responsibility of volunteers. Our DCP, Chapter 3.5, opens by listing the many social, economic, and ecological benefits of trees. However, Gust's lived experience is that this rhetoric is not upheld in practice. Planning officers are allowing the complete obliteration of vegetation in residential development site, which often includes the street tree as well. Add to this the staggering number of tree removal approvals on private land, virtually non-existent street planting, and woefully inadequate tree replacement, and the cumulative effect means urban heat will impact the community for years to come. As residents, we listen to community concerns around the prevalence of non-compliant developments being approved. Inaction on urban greening is another problem, and the restricted ability to walk and ride amongst the unshaded roads and a predominance of impervious surfaces. It's difficult to classify the many changes required into short, medium, and long term because many measures are needed as a matter of urgency and also for the long term. We are seeking the following: we need control plans which strongly support tree retention, including existing street trees, and the addition and proper establishment of new advanced trees. We need the provision of deep soil for canopy trees, ensuring the greater part of the footprint is not concrete or paved. We need stringent checks on private certifiers, ensuring that compliances have been met. We'd like to see the ceasing of rezoning recreational and community land into residential land. We need to see structural changes within council that ensure green infrastructure is not undervalued or overlooked by particular departments or managers. We need the mandatory inclusion of trees along all new shared pathways. We need a wide-scale and well-funded street tree planting programme. We need an operational plan where the funding allocation reflects the enormous benefits of trees for the community, and we need ongoing education for residents and council staff to help them understand the value of trees. Gust thanks the panel for the opportunity to express just how important human health and wellbeing is in the design of our suburbs. Canopy is now widely recognised as one of the best ways to future-proof our heating urban environments, and we hope that this can be reflected in the resourcing within both state and local government.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your excellent submission. And you've clearly done so much incredible work in your community and done something quite big, really. It's a very, very noble project you've undertaken and you're carrying on with, so thank you. I just, can I just ask you, just to start, about when you say people want trees, when they're, you know, when there's a conversation about them, what's your experience there? What does that look like? What does it sound like? And how has it manifested into that understanding for you?
We meet a lot of people who have moved from Sydney to come to this area, and the first thing they notice is the lack of trees because they've come from Hornsby Council or Karinga Council, and so that's why they get in touch with us, to say, you know, what can we do?
I think also because our little project's been going for eight years.
Yeah.
And how many trees have we up to?
Nine hundred and fifty advanced trees.
And it's planted by invitation, it's not guerrilla gardening. So it starts with a letterbox drop, and if people are interested, we go and have a look and assess. We do a doll before we dig. There's some occasions on the main throughways where we know we can't plant. The councillor said there are a few, a few main roads, sorry, it's changed.
Yeah.
Where we know there's coaxial cables change, major infrastructure. And then we have a look if there's power lines or not, and then we help the resident pick a suitable native tree. The deal is, they water it. And where the previous speakers from council said they just don't have the wherewithal for maintenance, that's the thing that works, is that adoption. That's what works. And people say, yes, I want a tree. Doesn't matter if they don't. But then, over time, our trees creep around the streets, the side streets, because people see, as you saw in the photos, a little tree in a box with a sign on it with a watering tube, and it's cared for. That's what makes the little trees survive. However, we continually see the old fire bro houses being knocked down, quite obviously, and our strips get stripped of perfectly good garden to a moonscape. Not even a weed is left. And then a Lego block house goes in and there's no garden, and maybe a pot plant on the porch. That's the anxiety for local residents.
Can I just add?
Yes, please.
On education, as Debbie was saying, we are noticing a different demographic moving in, and they tend to be better educated, better informed about the benefits of trees. And we've also made a conscious effort to educate the community, and we find that once people become aware of the benefits, they're more likely to have a tree, basically, and see the advantages. We're noticing, you know, for instance, I had a conversation recently with a young mother who said it wasn't until she had children and had to push the pram through the heat that she even considered how important trees were. And other people have told us because they've seen our social media posts, they've seen our trees with the signs, that they've actually had the chance to consider the benefits of trees, and that's when they'll be open and receptive to having one, yep, on or near their property.
It was very interesting, just as a quick side, last night I saw the news that the court had ruled that human rights had been violated by Swiss inaction on climate, and it was older ladies who had brought the proceedings because they are more susceptible to heat stress and premature death by heat.
The great laws.
Yeah, it was a very interesting litigation outcome. With your relationship with council, what does that look like? How does it work? Is there a relationship?
Well, they know we exist, and they, people have, before they, if they decide they'd like a tree, they will get in touch with council, and council will often say, you need to get in touch with Gust, Grove and Shetres, which we thought was interesting. We thought, oh, that's a win for us, really, because they're, they know what we're doing. And then, so we've been planning for eight years, but really without any council support whatsoever, but though we're always pushing for their support, we're always looking for help. And so recently, it was very exciting to be called to a meeting with the tree management team. Lesley and I attended that meeting, where they said they'd really like to work with us on getting trees in the street. We thought, that's great. So there's now an official application form, which is, this has only just happened. So we've sent our first application form from a resident wanting a tree. They have chosen the tree that they would like. And at that meeting, council said that they would provide the tree and plant the tree. So, but I've just, this morning, I got the answer back from council, and they've said, yes, Debbie, you can go ahead with that planting a tree. So they've inspected the site, they've approved the planting of the tree, but they're not providing the tree, even though they did admit to there being very limited funding for street trees because there's only forty thousand dollars for the whole of the Central Coast in this financial year, which ends soon. But anyone? Anyway, I think we're working on a good relationship, we're working on a better relationship, but we're still happy to have their help because we're quite tired after ten years. We have lives as well.
It's been, generally, it's a constructive and positive relationship. Yep, we try to keep it that way, really, for maximum effectiveness.
Yeah.
Whilst, really, we're lobbying for them to change many of their practices.
And so with the, with the sort of life of the project, do you see, in terms of the need for scalability and ongoing, that's something, is it your view that that is something that council should be taking on? Or is, what is your future plan for your project? Will it keep going?
We would like to be obsolete.
Right, yes.
That's our wish. We feel that we're doing council's job for them for free, and we're all very busy and tired and, you know, yeah, it's very demanding, but we've been, we feel that we've been left with no choice but to do it because we are the ones living in an urban heat island. We've got that lived experience and it's really unpleasant. For six months of the year, it is, it's a struggle to get around. Yep. We'd like to be obsolete. Yeah.
So in terms of scaling up, we have had contact from one or two other groups. Our, for instance, canopy keepers over on the northern beaches have really followed a similar methodology of planning by invitation. What you can do about tree demolitions is harder, and there's, we got approached by another little group, a group of them, a mate one, a few weeks ago, to say, can you come and plant where we are? And going, form your own group?
Yeah.
Here's something to go on. Away you go. So we're not incorporated, we live under the umbrella of the Penitent Environment Group. So we're not a business, though some people think we are.
We've come, yeah, we've come across people in other areas who are very keen to see change, and as Lesley's saying, we'll try and encourage them to do what we're doing, or at least to lobby their local councils.
Yeah, because we are confined to the peninsula, because that's already big enough. It's already a population of something like forty thousand. Yeah.
So you'll find over in Helvich, they have a very strong environment group over there, as they do the Patonga Residents' Association, there's another one at Cape Cod Barna, there's another group, the Avoca Residents' Association, there are Eco Village, the crowd office at Summersby, trying to hold on to the forests up there, the Centre Coast Environment Networks, Conservation Park. We're all doing something. But our particular method of adoption is just getting the trees watered. A choice. So the great Peter Kundal said, the last place that people feel they have control over their environment is their garden. So we've taken that and given people a choice of what type of tree would you like, because they want one, and that's what makes programmes successful. And then they own it, make a little donation, they get what they want, they're relieved, and they're proud of it, and they look after it. It doesn't always work. Sometimes an elderly lady might get moved off into a nursing home, the tenants come in, they assume it's a council tree. Sometimes you have to do a few little rescues.
But really, very few.
Very few.
Yes, very successful.
So we've got a little backup plan for trees that may not be thriving.
The education is desperately needed, though, desperately needed. The, yeah, the risk rhetoric around trees is still extremely outdated.
The insurance policy doesn't help.
Yeah, yeah.
Can you just, can you elaborate on what that risk rhetoric around trees sounds like to you?
So it's a preoccupation with the risks that trees pose, and a lack of awareness of the benefits. So it's in irrational, sort of, it's usually in irrational fear. Not always. Some risks are genuinely, yeah, plausible.
It's not always risk, it might just be inconvenience.
Inconvenience.
Mess, leaves dropping.
Yep, yep. And also, if people have had an experience with a tree, the wrong tree that's been planted in the wrong place, they may have had a negative experience, and, or they've, you know, they've read media coverage about storm damage from trees. So we just feel like there needs to be a lot more heralding of the benefits in the media, in policy, yeah, everywhere, really.
Can I, does council have its own nursery?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does have its own nursery in Gosford. Oh, it's Eruin, actually. But we haven't received any trees from them because I don't know, but I think we're not part of their budgeting. It's where we'd like it to be, that council's nursery expands and produces trees that can be used for street tree planting. At the moment, that's not happening. The nursery provides plants mainly for dune bush care.
I don't want to be critical of the council because I'm not from here, but, I mean, I was a mayor of a council many, many years ago, and we provided trees to people, particularly in newer estates. We employed a community gardener whose job was to advise people of the appropriate trees. And to increase awareness, every citizenship ceremony, everyone there received a tree.
Lovely.
And were urged and encouraged and given information about planting it, and how important it was to recognise their, you know, them being new citizens of, you know, our city, but also of Australia. I mean, that was thirty years ago. So.
We don't want to beg council's nursery at all. I think it's just a limited budget that they have to work with.
Well, I've got to tell you, I mean, look, as I said, I'm not going to be critical of the council, but I would have thought this was something that was relatively important and relatively inexpensive.
We're concerned that it's, yeah, it's important, isn't reflected in the budget, absolutely.
Anyway, thank you. I won't, it's not my, my town, but other, other communities have done it and certainly continue to do it and are able to readily fit it within their council budget.
Something that's quite unique in the state of New South Wales is the coastal open space scheme that was introduced by councillors probably about 35 years ago with a budget, they've got put that in the submission to preserve the ridge tops from development. And now that, that is still being, that's still going even though the, the money put aside for coastal, the coastlands, we call it. It appears to have been subsumed into the budget as part of the amalgamation because it was all administered by the previous Gosford council. So we are very lucky. When you look up, what can you see? The ridge tops and they're all green. And a lot of people shit that we've got a very green area until you come down and then you're in a heat bowl.
Can I, so I mean, having spent a bit of time in, it's not an isolated situation to the Central Coast, having spent a fair bit of time in Western Sydney growth areas during the election campaign. Is there any examples of other LGAs where a successful tree planting exercise has been carried out and the incentives surrounding that that you can sort of point to? That works?
Well, I'd like to start by saying we know that Lane Cove Council has an opt-out strategy where the trees are planted and you opt out if you don't want one. But, you know, most people don't. So, I mean, and you only have to look at councils like Lane Cove or like Hornsby and you can see that there's extensive street planting when you drive around. That existing trees are protected, you know, for new developments. And it's, it's like going to another planet compared to where we live. Yep, completely different culture.
So in terms of, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So also, we went to a conference easily eight years ago and heard Dr Libby Gallagher talk about Cool Streets Project. She ran in Blacktown, the Blacktown City Council. And that reaffirmed that we're on the right track with our method of engaging the residents to give them a choice. So that's another, another thing you could look at. I think I'll put that link in the submission. You can have a look at that.
Thank you.
And Macquarie University have done the Right Tree, Right Place now research with their big projects, their CO2 project now at Richmond, looking at whether or not how well our native plants will respond to higher CO2 emissions and which then can then guide future plannings of not putting in some trees anymore because they'll fail.
So, sorry, what's the, what's the level of obfuscation with the dialogue on this subject with the council? Where, where's the roadblock?
It's the money, isn't it? Effectively.
I mean, it sounded very much, they were saying it's fiscal, but it's financial. But do you see any other kind of less visible thing, given your proximity to it all?
No, but we, yeah, the, the lack of, the lack of valuing of trees is reflecting, reflected in the budget sadly. But we've experienced structural problems that also seem to, to put approvals very much in the realm of the roads department. Which is problematic.
And we did hear that in the evidence earlier. There was some, a very clear experience there that a tree might be proposed and the road manager says, actually. Mr Ruddick?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to echo what the Chair said and I'd like to congratulate and applaud you on this wonderful initiative. And I think it's a great name, it's a great acronym, and you're clearly passionate about it. And, you know, to plant 900 trees over the last several years is something you can be very proud of. Now, I, we may disagree that there's a climate emergency. In fact, we do disagree, but we are a unity ticket that the more trees the world's got, the happier we'll all be. So please keep doing what you're doing. Now, you did say that, which I thought was interesting, that when the council has attempted to plant, plant themselves or trees, that they have a high failure rate, whereas your initiatives have a lower failure rate, which I'm sure is the case because the bureaucrats are just going to be wanting to tick a box where you genuinely care about it. You genuinely want to see that tree become a successful thing. But then you did say that in a climate emergency, it is disgraceful that such vital health infrastructure has been left to the responsibility of volunteers. So now I think, I mean, we, we have said that the council, the bureaucrats don't have a good track record at this, you do have a very good track record. Now, I understand that the three of you and probably others that you know have put in a huge effort here. But I mean, rather than sort of trying to get the government to do it, which we, we know that hasn't got a good track record on it, are we better off sort of seeking further volunteers from the community?
Well, we have and we do. And we're finding a very time poor, yeah, we're finding people are very time poor.
Right.
And I know globally, there's a volunteer shortage anyway. So we would love more volunteers, but we would like, we would like it to become the job of council. We believe it's the responsibility of council. It shouldn't be. Yeah, the job of volunteers.
There's a reason we elect representatives.
We have a lot of volunteers to put their hand up and get in touch with us and say, next time we have a planting, which we do for National Tree Day, we have bigger plantings, could they come along and help? And they do. Lots of them do come along and they help. It's great to have that support, that terrific feedback. And we also have volunteers who water the trees that are not being well looked after for whatever reason. So we have people who go around and water these trees during the heat of summer. But like, like Jen says, we really want it to be the job of council.
Do you think there's scope for council to run a programme and to have volunteers to work with council? Do you think that, like, I, I, I understand the volunteer shortage, but.
That's jeep care, that's bush care.
Yeah, exactly.
Models there. So why can't you have street tree care?
Beautiful.
Well, I just have one, one further question. I, I would have thought, I mean, what you're doing at the moment is so productive and so materially good, that I, I think that sort of the less sort of control you have from the government, the better. Now, I also think, it's so impressive what you're doing. I think that you should sort of market GUST to other local council areas across Australia and, and put out sort of an instruction kit on how, look what we've achieved here. There's a lot more to do here, but it's been a good thing and we would encourage you to follow this sort of, this blueprint. Is that something that you have considered?
We've done that already. Really, there have been other groups that have said, look, could you please, you know, send us the information that you have, how do we approach the resident? What's the, can we have a copy of the letter that you give to the resident? What's the process? You also have to be familiar with council regulations on planting and factoring in infrastructure.
And also live under the, an umbrella of a constituted organisation. So we've got volunteers insurance, public liability. So when we apply for grants, so you have to be an incorporated body with constitution, et cetera, to apply for grants. And we have been successful in applying for grants, including one for the Queen's Jubilee.
Yeah, so we do pass on information and our expertise. And we're happy to do that. But we're, we're, we could do more, but like Jen says, look, we're, you see, you know, I've got grandchildren, full-time worker, volunteer already. There's only so much we can do yet.
Yes, well, I'm not asking you personally to do any more. You've already gone beyond an above. I do think if it gets merged into becoming a government department, I think it will lose the vitality that you've brought to it. So I would, would encourage you to keep going as a voluntary organisation.
Mr Parlow?
Thank you.
And then we'll have to wrap up.
Okay, look, I echo Mr Ruddick's commendation of you and the good work that you do in the community as well. Got to say, my great-grandmother lived in Blackwall and there's a photo from when I was a kid of riding my truck in front of her place and there's not a tree inside. So I know the challenges, but I guess one of the things is we're looking at the community and what recommendations we can make. There has been the Urban Tree Canopy Programme, five million trees. But that's only been eligible for 20 Sydney councils to be able to apply for funding. I was wondering if you would think that it would be a suitable recommendation that we had an expansion of that programme and that regional communities and areas like the Central Coast would be able to apply for funding through that programme to support organisations such yours or the council's own efforts in being able to plant more trees?
Yes, in a word.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Sorry, there was a grant that the state council, the state government is offering at the moment. I can't remember the name of it. We presented that to council and said, why didn't you apply for this? This is a great opportunity for funding. It was specifically for greening the urban environment. And their response was, well, if we have the resources, we will definitely consider that.
Because I, I think, you know, when we have a perception in terms of, and Mr Buttergig touched on it as well, when we think of heat islands now, we think of Western Sydney, we think of places further away from the coast. But when it comes to the peninsula, of course, you've got an example of a fairly densely populated area, which is by the coast but doesn't have any tree coverage. And as you quite rightly said, if you look at the Central Coast, we sit here in this room, we look outside and we see trees everywhere. But the reality of it on the peninsula is that once you get to the street level and house level, the trees just aren't there and you don't have that tree canopy to protect you. So I commend you on the work you're doing and if we can help in expanding our recommendations to support you, we'd love to do that.
I think that's the unanimous view.
Yeah. All right, I'm afraid we've run out of time. I think we could talk trees all day. Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much for your evidence. And I don't think there was any questions taken on notice, but if there are, the secretary, it will be in contact with you. Thank you for your time.
Congratulations.
And thanks for coming to the coast to speak with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome and thank you for making time to give evidence today. Could each of you please state your name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation? And we'll start with you, Mr Gillis.
Thank you very much. My name's Peter Gillis. I'm a committee manager of the Woi Woi Peninsula Residents' Association. I live in Etalong Beach and my affirmation is I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
My name's Mark Snell. I'm the Chair of the Woi Woi Peninsula Residents' Association. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making an opening statement?
I'll just introduce the two of us if you like.
Yes, please.
As well as being the Chair of the association, I'm also the voluntary editor of Peninsula News and I have been for 25 years. And so that's given me the opportunity to observe the planning process on the peninsula. And secondly, you'll notice another Mark Snell has made a submission, 108. That's me. And so that I'm here today to represent the association, but I think there's a lot of crossover between the two submissions in any case. But I'll pass over to Peter to make our introductory statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair and committee members for allowing the PRA to give evidence at this hearing. The PRA submission outlined four areas of impact of climate change on our environment and community. Those were local heat island effects, coastal erosion, local flooding and endangered wildlife species. The Woi Woi Peninsula Sand Plain houses 36,000 people in an area of 14 and a half square kilometres, the highest population density on the Central Coast. The sand plain averages five metres above sea level and has been made vulnerable by these impacts and by overdevelopment. Local heat island effects are well documented as a threat to life for the elderly, the sick and children under five. The peninsula has a tree canopy of only 10% and some areas have only one canopy tree per hectare. Etalong Beach and Booker Bay are examples of this and the result is a heat island effect of plus five degrees C in the summer months caused by overdevelopment, lack of tree planting and negligible tree retention. Now, the coastal erosion is evident everywhere. Yumina Beach and Ocean Beach have a history of erosion of dunes and loss of trees from high seas and tides. Beach erosion has come within metres of roadways and swells and tides have eroded the north end of the bay at Etalong Beach, threatening houses. There are no tangible plans in place to mitigate these effects and council recently approved a five-storey foreshore development within 19 metres of the eroding Etalong Beach. Local flooding from high seas, high tides now endangers properties in the North West and frequently invades parks in that area. High rainfall causes flooding of the creeks in the south and west and threatens homes, for example, last weekend. Some areas are only three metres above sea level and local flooding will only worsen with further extreme weather events. Endangered wildlife species are well documented for this area, which is characterised by the Yumina Coastal Sand Plain Woodland, UCSW. What was once an extensive corridor of woodland is now just several areas, each of only a few hectares. The flora and fauna have been under threat of extinction for over 20 years due to land development and management issues which continue to this day. Now, overall, the peninsula is a sad tale of overdevelopment due to disregard of existing planning rules, lack of stricter planning laws and neglect by local and state governments. Our most pressing need is for extensive tree planting programmes and local development planning rules which mandate planting of shade trees and retention of existing trees. The required 40% tree canopy will cost tens of millions, require a change of attitudes and take many years, but the benefit to the community is a matter of life and death. The way forward for our community will be to strictly limit and control further development to help maintain our lifestyle and protect what is a very unique and undervalued environment in the Sydney Basin via region. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Now, Chair, I wonder if I could table that, that speech for you and give out copies of it, simply because at the back of it, there are two pages of colour pictures which explain exactly what we're talking about and may give a bit of, help you with the information and questions that we have coming up.
Thank you very much. I was Google mapping as well while you were talking and trying to satellite in. I was definitely getting the, the feel and the geography desire.
Exactly. That's why I presented this, Chair. There are two pages at the back.
So there's just a short process that we go through. We just have to get the, the document checked and then we will, then we'll circulate it. But just in that meantime, if I can just ask you a couple of questions and then I'll throw to my colleagues and then we can refer back to it if that works for you.
Certainly.
Thank you. Just in terms of, so you, you've painted a very clear picture and a very experienced, knowledge picture of a community that is already exposed and will be further exposed to conditions that effectively could make the locality uninhabitable in essence. That's, what do you think is the mid to long-term future of your community and the development that already exists?
I think it's pretty stressful, actually. We have little infrastructure. The total population of the area is 38, 38.4,000. But as I said, 36,000 of those live on the sand plain. We have only three external roads coming in. There are one lane each. One is Woi Woi Road, the other one is Brisbane Water Road and there's a road leading over the Rip Bridge into the, to the east of, to the east of the peninsula. And now, if there's ever a serious problem with the peninsula, those 38.4,000 people are pretty much captured by that area. And we're going to this. And we'll go into this later when we look at the mapping that I've got. But I've been there five and a half years now. The population is dominated by people of not a great socio-economic factor and the elderly. Now, as I explained earlier, the elderly are very much affected by heat island effects. The attraction of this area to anybody is the beaches and the mountains around there and those things. So it is a very attractive area for people, but we feel that it's already overpopulated. We are basically full up.
Is there any discussion about, like, is there amongst the community? And I know it's a bit of a generalisation, but amongst the community, are there, is there any divide between those that are immediately adjacent to the waterfront and those that are further into the suburb?
I don't think so, no. I frequent the beaches on most days with a dog and I meet people from the waterfront properties, from properties further out, properties of high value and properties of low value. And there is absolutely no difference. It's a regional area with a very good vibe amongst the population.
Is there any discussion amongst people sort of more generally about the notion of planned retreat? Or is everyone very much there, they love it, they're staying there? There's no contemplation of ever having to move when circumstances may or may not change?
I think we'd all prefer to be there, whether we're forest hats and other man. And I think the other thing is that it is a diverse demographic. But it's interesting to see what the commonality is between those various interest groups. I would say the greatest divide is between the residents who are part of the community and the visitors. You know, things like Airbnb and that sort of use of the area has been identified in the council's housing study as being one of the issues that, you know, makes provision of housing on the peninsula difficult.
Is the short-term rental accommodation, is that a known issue amongst the community? Is that something that's active here?
Yeah.
Thank you. And I don't, I just want to, I just want to say, I don't talk about planned retreat in a rough and ready way or a disrespectful way. I'm from Lismore. We've just been, you know, we've been through an experience and I think we're a bit more blunt and frank about some of the things we discuss. So apologies, I don't mean any disrespect.
The thing is, for us, we just lack the strategies. I mean, that's really what our submission's about. And not only the strategies that do exist really can't be defined as strategies. They're nice sounding words, but they've got no rubber on the road. There's nothing, no commitment in them to do anything. And, you know, I mean, there might be, that's a broad generalisation, I know. But that is the general feeling about, you know, a lot of the stuff that comes out of council or through the planning system. You know, that we don't have, we have these planning documents that essentially are discretionary, things like the DCP, guidelines only. You know, they don't, there isn't any ability to, you know, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of hours of both residents' time and consultants' time and everything that's gone into them. And yet they can essentially be, and we can show examples of where it's essentially ignored in the planning process.
So your view therefore, you're saying if the DCP was an instrument that was more enforceable, you would be seeing less impacts that you're now struggling with trying to work out how we deal with those going forward?
We've had two challenges. One is simply to get what we believe is said in the planning documents to be followed. And we've been in existence just over two years. And we've yet to really tackle whether the policies are right or not. But, you know, clearly what we're saying here is that they're not, you know?
Mr Farlow.
Thank you. I guess in a sense, I've seen the pictures, the historical pictures in the past of, you know, Woi Woi, the Venice of Australia was sort of the original marketing. And I guess Venice has its own challenges when it comes to our changing environment and Woi Woi and the peninsula do as well. In looking at some of the challenges that are faced, now, of course, we've had Gus talking about the heat island effect and you've raised issues in terms of coastal erosion. But from some of the maps you've shown as well, like, it is the design of some of the blocks that create their own problems in a sense. These, as I think you described on the gun barrel blocks, so to speak. They're long, they're thin. It doesn't really provide with modern housing a great opportunity for trees or the like at each side or to be able to create much more than a house and a driveway. Do you think there's anything the council should be doing in terms of its DCP to deal with?
The quick answer, the quick answer is to revert to the previous DCP, which for the peninsula was the result of a Peninsula Urban Directions Strategy, which identified gun barrel developments as a problem. It had an aspiration of encouraging developers to combine a number of these long, narrow blocks to be able to provide medium-density development with leafy gardens as the character statement. And that DCP wasn't really successful in doing that. But that is the direction we need to head and we need to have a review of, well, what was the failure of that and how can we improve on it? What it's been replaced with is heading in the other direction entirely. We've seen a resurgence in these gun barrel developments that previously there had been, you know, some reduction in the...
So previously, the council's policy had been to try and consolidate, you know, yes, we need medium density, yes, we need to increase diversity in terms of the housing stock, but consolidate blocks in order to do it.
That's right.
Now you've had the reversion to just build on what you've got.
Their idea was, and it still says it in the LEP, even the new one, it says that we're wanting good quality, you know, high standard medium-density development. But that hasn't occurred. And the, you know, the effect of the, for example, the narrowing setbacks for these multi-dwelling developments has meant that, you know, we are wall-to-wall concrete and, or that's permitted. And, you know, so without the setbacks to allow the deep soil to grow things, we're just getting ourselves into a worse situation.
Thank you.
Has there been, so is your understanding that there is this awareness amongst the council staff that are working there? Or is it, or is it a bit head in the sand from your perspective?
It looks to us like they do a lot of hand wringing, but don't actually bite the bullet. I guess that's the short answer.
Yeah, thank you.
In other words, I think there's some awareness, but I think also that, you know, the amalgamation's brought with it a whole lot of problems. And I think they're, you know, in some senses, they're overwhelmed by their general, you know, task ahead of themselves, you know? But these are really difficult planning issues that I think their natural reaction is to try and kick the can down the road rather than to get on and get into the detail of it. But, you know, I mean, we're here because we think that it is actually, you know, both local government and the planning system is the creature of state government. And it is the way that that is structured, particularly in relation to the planning system, that has had the consequences that it's had, both in terms of the way the council behaves and in terms of the way it plays itself out on the ground.
And so from your organisation and the communities that you engage with, would the medium-density development with more green space be preferable than, say, dual occupancy of the gun barrel blocks? Is that the...
I think that it's more a matter of what the general quality of neighbourhood life is in both cases. In other words, you can have really good multi-dwelling developments and you can have really good, you know, dual occupancies. And you can have shocking examples of both. And, you know, part of the problem that I see is that we have too much subjective judgement, not enough objectivity. We have the allowance for variance. All of these things mean that it's hard for the community to be able to respond to any public proposed document when it's put on the table. Because what it seems to be saying is quite different to what it is actually saying. You know, it's sort of, it wouldn't, it wouldn't stand the test of the Australian Consumer Law, you know? It just, we say that we're wanting one thing and they're nice sounding words. But when it comes down to it, we say we're wanting setbacks, let's say of two metres. But when it comes down to it, we actually mean 1.8 metres because of the allowable variance. We don't have a process that requires either the proponents or the council assessment staff to actually provide, substantiate the decision to allow that variance. They just can say, yes, we think it's a better outcome. And we've seen that time after time after time. If you're going to allow variance, then you need to be able to say, on the basis that you get a better outcome, you need to be able to explain how that is.
So you, just for clarity on that, are you saying that's a wrangling that happens between the council and the proposed developer or the development? And they go into this kind of little room themselves and they have their discussions and they come out and everybody goes, how did that happen?
And so they have pre-lodgement meetings that are not minuteed publicly. I mean, they are minuteed, but the minutes aren't available publicly so that we can't, there's no transparency there. So we can't see what's actually going on. But also that then, you know, if the council makes one decision and it goes to court, then there's these conciliation meetings in the Land and Environment Court. And again, we're lucky if we get invited as a witness for the council and we're not there in our own right. And then secondly, that process, you know, it's like a lot of Australian law, it becomes much more like a marriage guidance meeting between the council and the developer. And the kids, us, are just not included and we're not actually considered to the extent that we would be under family law.
You mentioned the deep soil issue. This is something that has come up in this inquiry so far and the importance and the value or the necessity of deep soil. Are you aware of any programmes of remediation of former developments that can successfully recover deep soil access? That's free from pollution in that, in your locality?
I'm not quite sure what your question means, but, you know, there's always the opportunity. And we've seen a proposal in the last year to redevelop a block that had multiple dwelling, a gun barrel development.
Right.
And so that that's the opportunity, right? And I think, but the other thing is that when we've suggested this in our submission to Gosford, to Central Coast Council's housing strategy, that there needs to be more opportunity and support for resident-led development or redevelopment. And if you get, and, you know, part of the problem is by making it, if you like, a profit-driven redevelopment, then you don't actually get our community's needs addressed. To create smaller houses at lower cost for our community, which is what we need. You know, as Peter said, our median income is 80%, you know, 20% below the state average. And we need lower-cost housing. And we need the facilities to do that, you know?
But also, Chair, we need remediation of the existing developments where we've got so many gun barrels that we have a proliferation of tiles, concrete, pitch. And that's causing us the heat island effect, the other effects we can discuss as well. But without mitigating those, the community is fairly much doomed. And there is quite a few of those, as I'll demonstrate when we have a look at these photos.
And we have got the photos and we have, yeah, yeah, yeah. And also, I know we will, we've got a few minutes to go, but there was just a couple of things and if we can come back to them. But one is, I would love to hear your views to elaborate on what you just said about community-led. What are some things that you have considered could improve how we engage and how we allow community to lead? And the other issue I'm interested in is, are you aware, is there any land banking happening in the area? Are there specific developers or proponents? And I'm basing what I'm asking on what previous witnesses kind of alluded to. So there's two things there. I'm in your hands as to whether you want to go to the photos first or how you would like to do that.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Very cool. Okay, the first one is in terms of land banking, there's one example on the peninsula with UCSW. The Hillview Nursing Home, which is on the corner of Hillview Street and Veron Road, was subject to a Land and Environment Court hearing. I can't remember the exact year, but around 2007, Gosford Council versus Providence Projects. And the dispute was whether it was or wasn't Yumina Coastal Sand Plain Woodland. The court found that it was and rejected the proposal. But then the nature of the planning system was that the proponent could come back and he gets a new council and the new council says, oh yeah, that's okay. And in that process, so the Hillview Nursing Home exists, but the part that wasn't the footprint has been attempted to be retained as Yumina Coastal Sand Plain Woodland. And it is a significant stamp. But they were also required in the process of the approval to put, I think it was $225,000 aside, which went into a council trust, which is called Protection of the Environment Trust. And over the last couple of years, the council's trust has been spending that money through the bush care program on council-held Yumina Coastal Sand Plain Woodland holdings. So that's an example of the, you know, the bio-banking, if you like.
Yes, yes.
So the other part of...
About public participation and community-led, where that can be improved?
These questions are so big, you know? My apologies because I think that, you know, and I guess what I would ask the committee is to really delve into the depths of some of this stuff. Since the amalgamation, we don't have community meetings that are led by the council. In the Gosford, you know, I'm not suggesting that Gosford Council was, you know, without its problems. It certainly had. But one of the things that it did do was to hold community meetings to try and ascertain the community feeling where this council does it on an individual basis. It just takes individual submissions and it really isn't, you know, looking at, well, it counts 350,000 people as its community. Whereas we've made a submission to the council that we are a community in our own right as the peninsula. There is a social planning district of the council that is the peninsula. And two statistical, you know, Bureau of Statistical Level Two areas encompass it. And we've made a submission to the council that we should be a ward of the council in our own right. And so that part of the problem is, what is the community? And we need, you know, we have, the median population of a council in New South Wales is roughly 38,000. So that if we were anywhere else in the state, we would have our own council. We wouldn't even be part of Gosford Council, we would be the Peninsula Council. But, you know, the reality is they can nevertheless create a community and work with us as a community rather than trying to undermine our community and say we're not a community, we're part of a bigger community. And anyway, sorry, you know, because this is a big issue, it sort of distracts me. But as an example of that, we recently put in a submission of, they did a Central Coast Nighttime Economy. And the way they split up the Central Coast meant that even though the peninsula has the highest turnover according to their figures in the nighttime economy, we weren't even mentioned. And, you know, we were, the figures we could see in the maps that were included in the draft proposal, but they came out saying, well, the biggest one is Terrible and that Terrible and Gosford and Wyom are where, you know, things should be. And so that it's that lack of identity, you know, working with a community that is a community, that sees itself as a community. If you go to, I'm sure, you know, when you went to your relatives down in Blackwall, if you asked them where they came from, they would say, we're from the peninsula.
Peninsula's got its identity, yeah.
And that really is, I think, central to part of what we're about. In other words, you know, the planning needs to be at the peninsula level, at the community level. And so that, you know, the mechanics, the conceptualisation and the processes fail us. And so that, you know, we don't... And so that, you know, we don't, I mean, what is the role of the community in this process? You know, we would say, we would like to see local democracy, local meaning the Peninsula and democracy meaning that we have a meaningful say in the planning, regulations and policies and strategies that affect us. And at present, we don't. We get to put in a submission, but we're lucky if it even sees the light of day, you know. I mean, we put in a submission on Yamuna Coastal Sand Plain Woodland. It didn't appear in the council agenda that we'd even made a submission. You know, that sort of, and you know, it's a substantial submission, as you can see, you know. You're free to have copies of all of these, by the way, if you wish.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep, we'll move on to the...
Peter wants to talk about the maps.
Yes, we are, I apologise for that, so yeah, please take us...
You can see how it's such a big issue.
I do, we do, thank you.
And a passionate issue for Mark, obviously.
Yes, yes.
The first picture you've got in front of you is the Woi Woi Peninsula aerial view.
Yes.
And that big thing in the middle of it, which looks quite white, is actually the Peninsula. That is the sand plain with 36,000 people on it. To the left-hand side of it, you can see the mountains and some of the area on the mountains has been populated and developed. And beside those mountains, on the left-hand side, the west side, you can see areas of trees. And that's what's left of the UCSW, the woodland, the fragments of it all the way through. And originally, it was a corridor right through there. The only plethora of trees is on Blackwall Mountain, which is the middle thing on the right. But you can see that the Peninsula itself is bounded by mountains and by sea and by Brisbane Water all the way around it. So it's quite isolated. And as we said, there's only three roads into it and there one line. If you look at the bottom of the picture, you'll see the Pacific Ocean to the south-east of Ocean Beach and Yamuna Beach. And you can actually see the waves coming in the headland there next to Box Head. And you can see the potential erosion from an area facing directly into the south-east of the Pacific Ocean. You can actually see that this is the most populated area of the Central Coast. This is a six-maps view. If you expanded this view, you would see that, that all you would see around there would be woodlands and trees. And so you can see that we're quite heavily populated. It might look like medium density, but it's actually 2,500 people per square kilometre in an area of 14 and a half square kilometres. The next picture I've got outlines the degree of penetration of development. And this is a picture of Etalong and Booker Bay. The main road you see going north-south on the left-hand side of it, next on Oval, that's Picnic Parade. And to the right of that, directly to the right of that is about 62 hectares. And if you want to count them, you can probably see about 60 canary trees in that area. That's all. You can see, you can clearly see the gun barrels in this picture. They're running north-south roughly. The forefathers, when they designed all this area, they actually were seven degrees to the east of north, I don't know why. Perhaps they were having a bad night. But you can see that this area is quite overdeveloped and it's typical of what's going on in the area, in the Peninsula. And it's very hard to mitigate this because those places where you see large red roofs from front to back adjacent to concrete driveways, there is no area, no deep soil, nowhere to put trees. So it's going to be an uphill battle to get this plus five degrees sea going. So those are the local heat island effects and the coastal erosion. Local flooding is on the left-hand side of, on the internal side where the rivers stream to come down from the hills. They're at about three metres, they're quite a bit lower than the average five metres of the Peninsula and they tend to flood during the recent rains that we've had. And we've mentioned the endangered wildlife species of the UCSW. And if you talk about species in the whole of the Peninsula itself, there aren't a lot, I've got to say. Birdlife is pretty much, unless you're around that Blackwall Mountain, birdlife is pretty much nothing. And very few possums except coming out of there.
Thank you. I'm afraid we've run out of time. Thank you very, very much. That's been very enlightening for us. And thank you very much for the document and the images, it's incredibly helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. If there were any questions taken on notice, no, I don't think there were, I was going to say the secretary will be in touch with you. All right, thank you. We'll now take a short break. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, welcome back. Welcome back and thank you very much for making the time to give evidence today. Could I ask you to please state your name, your position title and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Okay, I'm Ian Carruthers. I'm a resident of Avoca Beach here on the Central Coast.
Mr Carruthers, can you move your microphone? Or is... maybe it's not on actually?
Sorry, we're just... there we go. We've got a big loud voice there. So would you like to start again? Your name, position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation. Thank you, Mr Carruthers.
I'm Ian Carruthers. I'm retired. I'll tell you in a moment my history. And I'm a resident of Avoca Beach.
Fantastic. And just either the oath or affirmation, your choice.
Yep. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And Mr Carruthers, would you like to start by making an opening statement?
Yes, thank you. Well, as I said, a quick snapshot of my background. For the course of my professional career, I worked as a senior advisor to the federal government, focusing on environmental and natural resources issues, predominantly focusing on linkages between science and policy. Over the 20 years to 2010, I was enmeshed in the broad sweep of climate change policy and program implementation. For example, leading Australia's involvement in the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and in framing successive COAC Commonwealth State Climate Change Strategies. So since retiring a decade ago and living on the Central Coast, I'm actively engaged in local dimensions of climate change response. For example, as a member of Central Coast Council's Catchments to Coasts Advisory Committee and I was a member of the advisory group that developed Council's climate change policy, which you would have heard about this morning, I suppose. I'm not qualified in planning law or planning approvals etc. But with my experience, my submission approaches the planning climate change nexus from a high level framework perspective. The planning system is a fundamental pillar in positioning Australia to become resilient to the increasing climate extreme events that are happening now and inevitably will become more extreme into the future. Planning previously was founded on historic climate records such as flood levels. Planning urgently must switch comprehensively to encompass projected future patterns of climate extremes. My submission identifies the need for the planning system to address both greenfield planning situations and what to do about the legacy consequences of past planning arrangements and investments. The planning system is key, but it is not the whole solution. It needs to be embedded in a comprehensive climate resilience strategy across the whole of the state government as well as all levels of government. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to start with questions? Are you happy for me?
You take the plate, Che.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr Carruthers. So when you talk about that the planning system is important, obviously this inquiry is looking at the planning system. But what I think I'm hearing, and thank you very much for your submission and I'm reading in there, is that you think that, you see that there needs to be a much better connection between the three levels of government that operate and how the planning system properly talks to the climate system. I refer to climate system as in our policy approaches to mitigation and adaptation. Is that, is that pretty much what your analysis tells us we should be doing?
I don't think that we in Australia, governments, businesses, the whole lot, have come to grips yet with just how big a scale of problem climate impacts will be into the future. That, you know, we know, and I talk about this in the submission, and I give, you know, the example of exposure of residential homes on the coast and the scale there and the scale here on the Central Coast. This is going to be an enormous problem into the future. And an issue of this scale can only be tackled with, you know, a serious strategic and policy framework to approach it. And that needs to be a collective effort. I give, I make the point that, you know, reducing emissions, we know is a huge task. And it's where the Commonwealth and the state particularly play a role along with business and so on. In adaptation, really that pyramid is inverted. And it's local government and states are going to be mostly responsible for framing the strategy. And local governments simply don't have the scale of resources to, you know, tackle this individually. So there needs to be a collective effort between the states and the local government. Commonwealth will have a role, but they will see their role as much on the emission side and the adaptation side.
I think you refer to that we had good climate policy in the past. Or I think I'm specifically referring back to, I think it was about 2007 or 2008 where we had the Commonwealth was looking at the coasts in terms of sea level rise and coastal erosion. And kind of set the framework to say, look, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. But it seems that we, what we've done in New South Wales has suggested that you just prepare a coastal hazard plan. And what we've heard is that a lot of those plans are not necessarily signed off. They may not be actually dealing with the scale or the scope of what the science is putting forward. What do you think, what would you think is, if we drew a line in the sand, for example, about all of our planning instruments that we have attempted in the past and we were doing some kind of reset now, and I'm just referring to that coastal, the coastal population from sea level rise and coastal erosion. What do you think would be a kind of perfect process between local council, community and state government to plan right now and plan the best we can?
Well, everybody is a decision maker in this task. And you can't simply assign it to one party or another. And so, I mean, if we start with the community, every time somebody buys a house, they're taking on risk of different degrees, different circumstances. So one of the first things you need to do is to provide the community, individuals who are making these decisions with information that empowers them to assess the risks. And I'm pleased to say that, you know, the new flood planning manual for New South Wales does, I think it's principle for state, that there should be information provided to all who are involved in flood risk.
Just interrupting there for a second. Is the section 10.7 or the old section 149 certificate that would go with each real estate transaction of real property, is that good enough? Is that what we...?
Well, I'm not sure if you're aware of the history of this one, but you know, section 149 has been in place for a long time. And it identifies for the purchaser in a legally prescribed way that risks shall be declared, flood risk, bushfire, landslide, a number of other things. So the government, state government brought in, what might have been around 2014, 2015, a requirement that coastal inundation risks should be added. Well, there was a political backlash to that. People living on the foreshore did not want that information to be displayed. It's okay for other risks, but not for coastal risk. Why? Well, because it affected their property values, they said, and caused their insurance premiums to go up. Now, why their insurance premiums went up, I'm not entirely sure. Because if you look at your household, your home insurance policy, you find in the general exclusion section that certain things are generally excluded as a blanket. Nuclear events, war and coastal inundation. Well, the insurance industry's got stated reasons for that. I won't perhaps go into that now. But they won't insure for coastal inundation unless you really go and find, look hard to secure it and you'll pay for it. But generally, it's not available. So I think one sensible move certainly would be to have section 149 certificates for coastal inundation. Why should potential buyers essentially be denied access to that important risk information? I mean, it's not just section 149 avenue, it's one element, but, you know, council mapping information and so on. It should all be on the table for a decision maker, in this case the house fire, as to what they're taking on by way of risk and they can make considered judgments. The other aspect that I think is really important about information for decision making is, as I say in my submission, the costs here are going to be huge. You know, from the legacy assets that we have in place now. You know, coming back to the coasts again and that Commonwealth assessment that was done in about 2010. If I recall correctly, it's part of that study, which was done at a detailed spatial scale, right around the coast of Australia, looking at exposed residences and exposed infrastructure assets, roads and so on. If I recall correctly, the costed value of those assets were about 220 billion. So that's in the prices of over a decade ago and who knows, obviously much larger today. And we've continued with development on the coast. You've had submissions, I know from the Wambro people, about what's happening down there, you know. So we have built an enormous legacy problem that's going to have to be managed. And governments certainly cannot compensate their way through this. The treasuries aren't big enough to do this. So what it means is asset values will need to change in response to risk. We're seeing that happen in relation to flood explode. You know, if you look at a city like Lismore, you know, is to... Once, once the scale of the risk problem becomes sufficiently great and urgent, you see asset values resetting. And what we need to do here is have a slow and steady reappraisal of asset values in response to understood risks. And so this is, this is a sort of a national transition process, not something that becomes confronted as an unholy mess that is almost expensive. I mean, look, look how the government's struggling with the Hawkesbury Napier Valley, you know. It's basically just a huge problem that is so difficult to find a way through.
Just on that, in terms of, you know, what I think the international bodies refer to as the hard edges of adaptation. Is there any, is there any body of work that talks about anything other than planned retreat, relocation? And is that something that, how do you see relocation and planned retreat in relation to that kind of asset value reset?
Yep. I would basically distinguish here, as I do in my submission, between, you know, the legacy problem of existing assets, existing development, the consequences of past decisions, whether it's by local government planners or individuals or whatever. I would distinguish between the legacy situation and the, and new development, new investment, where you have the choice to actually do it on a climate resilient basis with the new, with new development in the planning and through the planning process. I don't think the planning process has come to grips with just how to do that on a number of fronts. And if there's time, I'll make a couple of comments about what's happening in Central Coast Council as an example. And, but in terms of the legacy situation, then I think what's really important is for governments in particular to develop and engage in a community consultation process to ask the question, what sort of future are we trying to achieve over the next 50 years or so for, you know, the Hawkesbury Napier or the coast? You know, in the case of the coast, what do we want on our open sandy beaches? Given that these beaches left to the impacts of increasing sea levels and greater ocean storm activity, they are going to recede. Those beaches will recede. That's, the geophysics of that are absolutely well understood. The, so what are you going to do about that when, you know, houses on the dunes are being undercut? Do we build seawalls? So where do we end up with that? Well, we're going to have, you know, complete armament of Australia's beaches like, you know, we have at Bondi and so on. Is this what we want for the future of the coast? Or do we want to let natural process? And of course, once you start putting in hard armoury on beaches, then you have sand being stripped away because you've changed the whole energy behaviour of the sea and the sand. So, you know, people value the beaches for their recreation and all those things that, you know, people love. Australians love going to the beach. So what are we going to protect? We get, you know, we're going to protect the future for the beachgoers. We're going to protect the homes with armoured walls. You know, this is, there's no, there's no simple answer to this. You just have to have, I think, lay out the conundrum and frame a strategy accordingly. And there won't be any single approach. Some places there'll be seawalls, other places that, you know, it'll be appropriate to say, let nature take its course and, you know, there'll have to be retreat. But it ought to be on the table upfront as to, you know, what future we want in this situation.
Can I ask you, just on that point in terms of the obvious micro example of that in terms of the Wambro seawall, what's your view with respect to that particular example of what you're pointing out there?
Yeah, I've been a participant in council's consultations on that. And I've basically taken a neutral position. Partly, partly that's about my own reputation in that if I take sides one to the other, then, you know, there's already, you know, social media attack on me that claims about things that I've said or have not said and things which abum them. But I felt it more helpful to provide advice about, well, if you're going to have a seawall, let's get a few things right that aren't being talked about, you know. So for example, I've advanced, and it has influenced council's policy. You know, I advanced the proposition that if you're going to build a seawall, then when you make that decision, you'd better have a say in nourishment strategy in place then and now. And, and not leave it to when some major storm event comes and takes all the sand away to try and figure out who's going, who's going to bear the cost and what are the logistical realities of delivering that quality of sand to the beach? Because maybe the sand nourishment issue is a showstopper in terms of whether you should have a seawall. Secondly, who's going to...
And can I ask you, Mr Carruthers, on that particular point, do you think that legwork has been done today?
Council doesn't know what the answer is on sand nourishment at the moment. They haven't found a source as far as I know. There was a state government set up group that was looking at that question. But I think that's, I don't think that's operating any longer. I mean, I thought it was encouraging that state parliament recently revised the offshore minerals legislation to differentiate sand mining for, you know, as a mineral resource versus restoring sand to the beach. So, I mean, that's, that seemed to me a very necessary and sensible option to... So, I mean, that's, that seemed to me a very necessary and sensible option to to bring onto the table. Because, as I said, I don't know in in the Wambril case what should happen. I mean, past, past planning decisions and continuing capitalization on on that June really was the wrong way to go. But but we're where we are and and so what do you do about that? But, you know, it it does come down to sort of a matter of social equity, doesn't it? What are the rights of, I don't know, sixty householders who've now vastly overcapitalized those blocks because they're prime location, sea locations, versus the beachgoers who are really concerned about the future of their beach and surf and and so on? It's, it's, it's a wicked problem.
Can I just pull that sort of problem up into the more generalized context then, in terms of this equity issue? So you've got disproportionate effect of climate change happening in coastal regions where where equity rich, in other words, the values of properties are much greater on the coast. Is there a role or a way to use that wealth and equity to invest in the mitigation against climate change in the interests of those land? In other words, relying on the self-interested values of the property owners to use the equity that they have in that to then fund investment into inoculation against environmental degradation and climate change? Because you, you've got to find a way to use the wealth in a fair way to contribute to the mitigation, it seems to me. So I just wondered if you've thought about any methods?
No, I haven't.
You've got all this wealth locked
Starting to stand to a bit like, bit like a tax, isn't it?
Well, well, you've got all this wealth. I hadn't, I didn't, I haven't, I don't profess to, it's not a rhetorical question. It just seems to me that all, a lot of our wealth is locked up on the coastal fringe of Australia. That that stands to suffer the most and and so they they should bear some of the costs relative to the if their property is going to be, I mean, Wambril's a microcosm of that, but of course, yeah.
Well, I suppose in a small way, it happens with the way rates, you know, council general rates are set in terms of property values. Of course, if if the state government went in the direction of a of a land tax rather than stamp duty, would be another way of of, you know, tapping into that asset asset value that you speak about.
Yep.
Um, but no, I don't have any answers on that. But look, it's, it's a good example of the discussion that needs to be held.
Mr. Crowthers, going into that wicked problem, and I think your submission talks a lot about the funding arrangements effectively. And whether it be, you know, federal, state or local, somebody's going to have to pick up the tab somewhere. So the Wambril example, for instance, you've got, of course, property owners who will have to make that contribution in terms of an erection of a seawall to be able to maintain their property. Some of these areas, you've got wealthy property owners, coastal erosion is probably one of those examples, who will be bearing the cost. But in other areas, like I think, as Miss Higgins would certainly be aware of, you've got people who are in the lower socioeconomic brackets who are being, you know, upfront against the the costs of our changing environment, whether that be in flood prone areas or bushfire prone areas. People have taken on that risk, so to speak. I thought your point was well made in terms of the two streams, so to speak. Those of past decisions and those of future decisions. Just concentrating on those of past decisions, how do you see that that cost should be shared? Insurance is, of course, one way, but very imperfect. But when it comes to federal, state and local systems, how do we, how do we share that burden and that cost?
Well, I I think, I think, you know, in in terms of those who are least able to bear the cost, individuals, governments probably will come to the party in in some way with 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 assistance. As they do now, you know, as happened, you know, at Grantham in Queensland after the floods there, you know, you you had investment by government in in essentially retreat. But but as I indicated before, in 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 terms of general compensation and assistance for the scale of the problem, I believe it's it's beyond the capacity of of governments collectively to sort of compensate through this. I mean, if you just look at the the value of real estate in in the Hawkesbury Napier, how on, if we have a really big flood there, can government really enable, you know, through financial payments to redress what people are losing? It's, it seems beyond imagination that that could happen. So I don't know what the answers are, but that's what I made the point before about information's needed to people so that in time progressively asset values can can reset reflecting reflecting the risk. I don't see any other way of essentially aligning the the physical realities of the climate risk with the market. In the case, in the case of new developments, would you like me to talk about new developments a little?
Please, yeah.
So let me, I'm not critical of Central Coast Council's performance in Syria. Let me make this very, very clear. And in fact, you know, set up in my introduction, I've I've worked closely with council to to try and get a really good approach to climate resilience here on the central coast. And I think that, you know, generally speaking, they've done a pretty good job. Hasn't been helped by their financial disaster, which, you know, stripped down their human resources to minimum levels. But in the coastal zone management plan, well, which is recently expired, but is still the basis for council policy. They say, well, we'll have an effective economic life of for new households, new homes built on the coast of of forty years. Well, to reflect forty years of of sea level rise in into the future. Plus, in terms of, in in the submission from council, I noticed that in for flood planning, it's thirty five years. Coasters for an economic life, for the, for flooding, it's a design life. And you might say, well, what's the difference? Well, when you, when you look, for example, at Engineers Australia's Australian Rainfall on Off Handbook, then, which was the latest edition is twenty nineteen, they have a whole discussion about risk management. And they say, well, you, you, actually, there are three approaches to considering risk in terms of asset life. You've got economic life, you've got design life, and you've got the effective life, the effective asset life. And they're not the same thing. So here you've got in Central Coast Council on the coast, it's economic life. And and in flooding, it's the design life. They're not quite the same thing. And you need to stand back and think about what it is you're actually trying to achieve in terms of risk management. Engineers Australia AHRNR broadly recommends that you actually use effective asset life, which council's not using, you know, so. But but I think the more significant issue is, why are we approving new developments that are essentially climate resilient for the next forty years? Is that the right timeframe for a home being being built in a flood plain or on the coast? Shouldn't we really be having a discussion about, well, how long are these homes really going to be there? It's not going to be forty years. How many homes get knocked down in in forty years? They're either maintained and go on for many decades or there are additions and modifications made made to the existing home to to go on to the future. There's not too many homes I see around this area getting getting knocked down after after forty years. So shouldn't we be thinking about a longer climate resilience horizon here than than that? So I think even with new developments, which is a simpler case, we need to have a discussion about things like the the effective asset lives. And and of course, you know, the discussion is not just about the climate risk. Because as you're building more resilience, probably that's going to affect building construction costs. So let's have a discussion about where where the balance point lies in terms of saving a bit of money now versus longer term resilience.
Yeah, very interesting point. I I am from Lismore. And we, you know, we had that very real scenario in front of us when people were talking about, well, I'm just going to build back and I'm going to do it resilient. And then people go, hang on, I actually can't afford to build back resilient. I can afford to build back how I did. But marine ply is better than ply and that's going to cost me double the amount. So there's that real factor right now happening i- in in response to a climate induced impact. So, yeah, it's very, very real.
Okay, well, since you've properly
You need to warn that you don't believe in climate change.
We will, we will get to that. Yes, yes, thank you. So thank you for coming along, Mr. Crowthers. So just just to clarify, so you previously were, you retired in two thousand and ten?
Yep.
And you had spent, was it twenty or thirty years as an advisor to the federal government?
Yeah, it was forty years with, a bit over forty years with the federal government. You know, water resources, hazardous chemicals, waste management.
And you mentioned that climate change had been a concern of yours.
The last twenty years was almost wholly taken up with climate change policy.
So that takes us back to the sort of the late nineteen eighties, early nineteen nineties. You've been concerned about global warming. At that time, we were told that by now the temperature would be five degrees higher, that the oceans would be five meters higher and that the Antarctic ice shelves would melt. Now, none of that's happened, which is a good thing. Do you agree with that? But those claims have 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 not materialized.
Well, as I said, I was, I was basically organized and led Australia's involvement in the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the IPCC, right from early nineties through to twenty ten. I've led the Australian delegation for many years. I don't think you'll find the IPCC report, reports, even the first one, talking about temperature rises and sea level rises of the scale you're speaking about in in your question.
Well, there was endless predictions at that time in the in the nineteen eighties and nineteen nineties.
Maybe, maybe, you know, the media scaremongering or or, you know, the doom and gloomers were doing that. But but the but the reputable science community absolutely was not.
No, I disagree with that. There's plenty of examples of 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 leading authorities predicting calamity. But my question was, it's a good thing that these things have not materialized.
No, climate, climate change is unfolding on a continuing basis. You know, we're seeing the the fingerprints of human disturbance of the atmosphere. Human disturbance of the atmosphere with increasing greenhouse emissions. We're starting to see that human fingerprint in the climate impacts. And there's a whole discipline of climate science that that looks at this question of attribution. You know, to what extent is the pattern of extreme climate, climate events part of natural variability and how much of it is is due to the 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 human effect? And they're able to attribute that distinction. And and as time goes by
I don't think that they can attribute that distinction now. I think there's still a lot of guesswork. Nobody's claiming, I mean, look, the Bureau, the Bureau of Meteorology predicted that Australia would have a very hot, dry summer. We had a very cool, wet summer, so they couldn't get that wrong with just with a prediction of a few months.
All I, all I can say is if you'd like to go on behind and look at the latest IPCC report and look for the the chapters that deal with attribution of of the human fingerprint, you'll you'll find it all, the science of that laid out. You know, it's not for me to try and interpret the detail of the science here.
Well, I've just put it to you that, you know, look, mankind has has suffered from many mass delusions. It's quite possible that this is another one and we should be open to that possibility.
Look, mankind can, people can believe anything they choose to believe. And as I say in my submission, in Australia, we've spent thirty years on what are colloquially known as the climate wars. While some regard climate change as an important issue to be addressed based on the science, others claim that, you know, it's just not, not happening. And and so we've lost thirty years in terms of of action, so.
Well, it was important to have a debate.
Somebody, if you have a belief about something that's contrary to the science, then sorry. But the physics of the climate system will be driving climate behavior, whatever the individual believes. So it's, it's really important, this, that it is based on scientific evidence.
Well, there's lots of scientists that are deplatformed that don't agree with the orthodox
Share, point of order. Look, I'm, I'm reluctant, but I understand the members' passion for climate denialism and I understand the witnesses' passion for climate affirmativism. But if we're going to get anything out of this, I suggest that you call him to order on the basis that he's not actually asking questions. He's debating whether or not climate change exists.
I, I really
All right, thank you, Mr. Riddick. Just, just going to take you briefly, I, I suspect you're aware of it, but the Hawkesbury Napier Valley Disaster Adaptation Plan that is currently being developed, are you aware of that?
No.
Are you aware of any of the work that around the Reconstruction Authority? Have you had a look at that kind of framework? No. Okay, I was just curious because this current government's approach, carrying on from the former government's approach, is that, you know, we've got this Reconstruction Authority and it's tasked with the responsibility of preparing state mitigation disaster plans and this kind of readiness for the hazards. And I was just, I was seeking your input if you'd had any thoughts around that framework. Because we're talking about the planning system, obviously, but now the Reconstruction Authority is this kind of new entrant, so to speak, into the planning system. And I was just curious as to whether you'd had a look at that or it's, 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 in in real terms, you know, a planning lawyer of twenty, oh, how many years? It it really is a kind of very different front to the planning system. And we haven't really ever seen anything like that before. And it does have a lot of powers and, yeah, just. And so then, one of the things, so from your evidence and your submission, you conclude that, in essence, the planning system can and does do well in certain circumstances with climate and development. But it really, your concern with all of that knowledge and over many, many years is is really about what do we want to achieve into the future? And how do we, what are the risks and how best can we grapple with them? And how do we distribute those risks and how do we pay for them?
Yeah, that's right. Because, as I say in the submission, since European settlement in Australia, you know, over two hundred years ago, all that development occurred under a stable climate system. Since the last ice age, you know, for the last ten thousand years, the earth's climate has has been remarkably stable in in terms of when you look at the, all the averages of the climate record. And they do have the records going back. Yes, they didn't have thermometers, you know, but back then. But but, you know, in things like tree rings, brain coral cores and so on, the scientists are able to get a very good handle on 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 the climate of the past. And 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 so in Australia, we've, we've developed through the planning system and investment decisions on the on the basis of a stable climate. Yes, huge natural variability in Australia, much more so than than one of other countries. And the planning system, to a greater or lesser degree, has has managed around that natural climate variability pretty well. But but no longer, the, the, it's no longer a climate stasis situation. The climate, the climate system is moving due to to human effect. And it's going to accelerate in in the way that the the climate changes. Because there's, there's a big accelerate in in the way that the the climate changes. Because there's a big lag in the in the oceanography, for example, as as heat is taken up into the oceans. You know, ninety percent of the the warming that's going on in the atmosphere due to greenhouse gases has actually been taken up into the oceans. And and there's a very big sort of lag effect due to the thermal mass of the oceans. So things like sea level rise are going to continue over centuries. And so we just have to confront this fact that you can't work off the temperature averages or or the rainfall averages of the past, or even the pattern of the extremes. It's all shifting, shifting upwards in terms of frequency and intensity of the extreme events. And that's what we have to deal with, which requires really a whole new planning paradigm to deal with that.
You mentioned earlier about local, you you mentioned about local examples. You said you were going to get back to that. I'm just curious, did you, have you covered what you were intending to when you were talking about those local examples?
Yeah, I, yes, yes, I just sort of thought it would be useful just to talk about just the example of asset life, you know?
Yes, I thought that might be.
Which is a very basic sort of, you know, element of risk management. But there are many others as well. We haven't got time to discuss all that this afternoon. But, yeah, these things need some good strategic consideration about where we want to go.
And can I just ask whether you have a view, we've heard today in terms of this particular locality in the central coast about the heat islands that we've created and caused. Is that something you're familiar with in terms of the climate framework and the sort of sweltering cities concept?
Yeah, well, it's, it's well known, you know, that that cities have higher temperatures than than rural areas, you know, it's it's due to the whole reflectance and so on. And so that's the urban heat island effect. But basically, even in a city like Sydney, the experience of the weather in Sydney depends on whether you live on the coast or whether you're out in western Sydney, you know. Western Sydney has, you know, much more extreme temperature situation. And and so in terms of the planning system, we ought to be framing our development agenda to to reflect those those situations. Unfortunately, you know, I think, as I touched briefly on in my submission, I think in terms of heat stress and sort of building design and homes and so on, in many ways, we've gone backwards in terms of, you know, more natural approaches like verandas and eaves and and trees to, you know, concrete developments that really rely on air conditioners to to maintain temperatures. Well, you know, is that a good move? Or we could have that discussion, I guess.
And so do you think, and the cause and the reason we've done that is because the planning system's just let it happen? Or is it, you know, from your view, have you got any kind of visibility on why we've done that? Is it the demand, the trend, because that's what developers have built, or?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, part of it, of course, is as you, as the urban population increases and you intensify development, and of course, the state government is very much pushing that. And so if you go increasingly to apartment buildings, well, it's not feasible to have verandas and eaves to the same extent, is it? So, you know, partly it's about intensification of development driving you in the direction of relying on technology like air conditioning to to maintain a habitable situation. I'm sure it's a pretty complicated story about costs of building, you know, the costs of building versus the the running costs of of living in the building, you know. You can, you know, insulation is a good case in point, you know. You can spend the money at the outset on putting in good insulation or double glazed windows or whatever. Or you can ignore all that and then pay a lot more to keep the place cool.
And you said, early on, you said that, you know, we're all decision makers, individuals when we're buying house, et cetera, or whatever we're doing. Do you think that the planning system currently, or it needs improvement, to be able to capture properly the power that individuals have, or people and communities have to, you know, to drive good outcomes? Is there room for improvement? And if so, what would that look like?
Well, I think, I'd just go back to the point that I made before. I think information available for all decision makers, including, you know, individuals in the communities, is really important. And I think governments have got quite a lot better at that over more recent years, you know, access to hazard mapping and that that sort of thing. But we used the section one forty-nine example, you know. So clearly, there's more that can be done in that space. And and just in terms of engagement with communities and about community involvement in in resilience. You mentioned, you know, the experience in Lismore. Here in the in the Hawkesbury, for example, there's a group in the Lower Hawkesbury that's centred around Spencer, that has done a magnificent job in developing a community resilience strategy. They've been helped by local government and by the state government in doing that. But that's after, you know, they were confronted with serious repeated bushfire risks and 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 multiple flood situations in recent years. So, you know, it's a good example of how the community can, in fact, take quite an effective approach to strengthening community resilience if they've got access to information and guidance on how to go about it.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Is there anything you'd like to finish with? Or, because we've come to time?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come along this afternoon.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing your report.
Yeah, thank you very much for your evidence. I don't think there were any, nothing taken on notice. If there was, the secretariat will contact you. But thank you.
We've taken copious note.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time and your evidence. Thank you.